So we are at time. Let's call this Churchill County Library Board of Trustees meeting into session. And we can start with a pledge of allegiance. This brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment at this time? Hearing none. We'll move on to the roll call of members. Maddie, do you want to start us off?
Here.
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 We are all in attendance. So verification of the posting of the agenda.
Tara Adams for the record. The agenda was posted on the fourteenth day of November 2025 between the hours of one and 5:00 P. M. and all of the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you Tara. All right, consideration and possible action regarding the approval of the agenda as submitted or revised. We did have one revision in the agenda, but it was just a correction of an error, correct?
The agenda and the agenda packet, so your agenda should be as submitted.
All right, thank you. So I would take that motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you Ryan. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Sari, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. All right, so our next order of business is consideration and possible action regarding the approval of minutes for the meetings held on August 28th and September 10th. Do we have any discussion of those minutes that we need to go over?
There was one edit that I missed, and I can't remember which one it was on. I have it highlighted here, but it said hire spelled H.I.G.H.E.R. and it was supposed to be H.I.R.E., I believe, like you hire someone rather than going up the step ladder. I can't remember what is that.
We'll find that and make that correction.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion of the minutes that we want to bring forward? All right, then I would take a motion to approve those minutes with the one edit that was discussed.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you Sari. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Ryan. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. All right, so now we have time for our library board of trustees reports. Do any of the trustees have anything that they would like to raise at this time?
I just want to say I went into the library a couple of weeks ago and I was doing my thing, you know, not really being in anybody's way hopefully. And I saw John out there communicating with the middle school students and I was just very grateful for that. I was grateful to see that you're trying to build a relationship with our patrons and I wanted to put that out into the public, that I really appreciate that.
I'd like to follow with, John represented the library November 7th at a big career fair we had with 59 booths. He was out there approachable. Every time I went to find him to introduce him to somebody else, he'd already met him. He reaches out and I'm really pleased with that.
I appreciate that. Does anybody else have anything?
I had the opportunity to chat with John, both in a meeting and as he was helping out at the desk of the library. And everything, you know, has gone really well. I really just kind of agree with everyone else that I'm very glad you're here and I think things are going well.
I appreciate that Maddie. I had an opportunity to have John over at Western Nevada College and to introduce him to Ashley McGarrett over there. And the conversations that we had the two times that you came over were really strong. To echo everybody else, I'm hearing a lot from the community that you've been out there moving and talking to a lot of people, so you've been busy. I really appreciate that from you, so thank you. Any other things that we want to bring into the report?
I'd also like to say that I attended the author series the other night and it went really well. I was again moved that an author, a local author came and talked to us. And it was very interesting to see her experience and where it stemmed from. And it seemed to me that it stemmed from her love of the library from when she was young and love of reading and that's what got her into writing. So if anybody is interested in learning how to write or learning how to sell your works, I think these author series are great to go to because the author told of how she did independent publishing, but also publishing cows hired her to do some books too. And so she could give the pros and cons on both aspects. So that was very interesting to hear.
Thank you Sari. It sounds like such a good series. Hearing no other things. Is there anybody else? All right, let's move on to the library director's report. John?
Well, I just want to thank you for your kind words and I love seeing you out at the library and inviting me to, you know, to high school. And just, I want to be someone that's speaking to our customers, making relationships and not someone that's hiding behind, you know, closed doors. So I have a great team and yeah, we're just working hard to do great programming for the community. So yeah, just with personnel, yeah, just had wonderful one-on-one staff meetings and just understanding their needs, their motivations, their programming ideas, and it's been going well. And so we're just building a lot of team collaboration within. The technical services librarian position, I don't have the current numbers, but at the time of the report was 25 applicants. And so yeah, maybe we'll get a few more.
How many applicants, John?
Twenty-five currently. But you know, after the report was sent, like, you know, there could have been more now, so you know.
Did they all have the qualifications?
Um, did they have the qualifications? Some of them do. I haven't been able to read through the exact, but I know some have us, some do have qualifications, but not everyone.
Okay.
But they, there's the job description is that, you know, working in libraries or having a customer service experience and those type of things are open to the position. Now, in terms of, you know, just, there's a, you know, just would present that on Wednesday, December 24th, due to, you know, low traffic and we present that the library is closed for the holidays. And yeah, just to revitalize a hardworking team. Okay. And now going into, yeah, just going into financial matters, there's some grant applications, which is some exciting to hear. But for the mini grant, LSTA mini grant, it's a $15,000, you know, grant towards library furniture. You can think of shelving and chairs and those type of equipment. And yeah, you can see the application process. Now for the 2025 LSTA competitive grant, that's towards maker space items such as laser cutters and this type of technologies. Now, the only thing is that there's certain requirements that are included in that regarding, you know, SIPA, which is Children's Information Protection Act, which we just as a staff, we want to be more informed about and share that information with the board and just include the community so we know what's involved with that. The, you know, we can, we don't have to rush towards things necessarily. It's, because it's, you know, it's still ongoing till next year as well, but we just want to make an informed decision as a staff and then share that information as a whole. Of course, if you have questions, yeah, we'll present the information so that we can all just discuss it in December's board meeting as well. Is this time for any questions or do I say anything? I'm sorry.
Oh, we may have some questions that come through, but one thing that I am noticing from your report is as you're talking about SIPA, we do have in our new business one agenda item on it for discussion. So if there's any more questions about SIPA, which is just to refresh everybody's memory is what Tom was educating us on last time, we do have a space for that specifically as well.
Right.
But I hear what you're saying, that making these kinds of decisions with more time is of use.
Yeah.
One other thing I noticed from what you were saying, and I want to make sure that it's in the record and that we're doing it correctly, is that you are proposing that we take the 24th off and close the library in December.
Yes.
In order to give the staff a family day. I don't think anybody would be opposed to that here. I'm not sure that we need a motion for that. Do we? All right, so are we able to do that in any way here?
I have a question. Is that a county holiday Pam?
No. We get Christmas Day.
That's it?
And we apply vacation time, so it's not coming out of like the county funds. It's, yeah, so there's no cost at county.
That helps me understand a little bit. So that means that we'll see it on our 20th, our December 20th board meeting and we'll have it agendized for that time and we'll make sure that we've done that correctly for you so that the staff have what they need.
I'm sorry, yeah.
No, no sorries. Just making sure we were doing our part.
That would be December 18th.
Oh, 18th. I apologize. Today is the 20th. My brain is in two places. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about the report that John put out to us or from what he was giving us here?
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just highlight a few other things really. Yeah, just the 2026 state collection development funding typically is approved as, you know, the funds goes towards Hoopla, our database. And so we don't have a necessary timeline, but you know, maybe in December I'll give you an update whether it's approved or not. And just want to highlight that this, you know, in terms of the switch to Ingram, our new book provider, it's done in advance because many libraries are now switching to Ingram because Baker &amp; Taylor is no longer. And so I appreciate the foresight of our team that foresaw this and the volunteers want to shout out that they did a great job processing the new materials. It took a lot of time and effort, but you know, operations were smooth. So that was all them. Just in terms of programming, just on October 25th, there was a Franken Toy puppet craft and there are 56 people in attendance. There's a picture there. It's hard to see, but Lily, our library assistant, she, she came up with the idea and we worked with, you know, we're working with children, parents in terms of crafting different donated dolls and making their own creation. And so it was a very successful event. Families asked if they can do this every holiday. And then, yeah, the author talk that Sari mentioned, you know, very wonderful talks with Mr. O'Shea, like a kind of thriller writer. And then, you know, yesterday Tammy Grace who like wrote about, you know, just really, yeah, stories that are community oriented, some stories that she pulled from the Fallon community. And yeah, she's a very interesting about her writing process. And then we're doing a few things for December and the December calendar that you can see is holiday steam, which is on December 5th, which is at 1:30. So it's before the tree lighting, but it's a great time for communities to come, community members to come in and design their own graham cracker houses and paper snowflakes and Christmas origami. Magdalena and Jay are, you know, really excited about this and spearheading this. It's part of steam time event, so we should get a group. And so I welcome everyone to, you know, witness this, but then families can go and enjoy their tree lighting. And then finally, December 20th, it's not in here, but you know, it's a great idea that we're going to implement on December 20th, a Saturday, an ornament craft where all ages can come in and design their own ornaments for the holidays. And then also, you know, next week Thanksgiving, we have grab and go turkey crafts. It's out here right now in the library, but it's just something for, you know, just families for the Thanksgiving holidays to just enjoy, including our regular programming such as storytimes. And then finally, without outreach and partnerships, I just want to say it was a wonderful time to participate in a career fair at the Churchill County High School. And I went with Magdalena, spoke to 76 students, was able to share, you know, a little bit about the library profession. But for those that aren't interested in being librarian, we have great career tools through our databases that can help them navigate their thoughts on, you know, finding a profession or preparing for college. We have other type of like, you know, again, books databases available that we shared QR codes to free online tools to help build their resume. And it's a great time to work with local workforce agencies, the other vendors that I was able to speak to. So thanks to, you know, Principal Tim Spencer, the teachers, and especially to Dr. Sue for inviting me out there. And so thank you so much for that. And then finally, I think that is my report because the handout is for later.
Thank you for taking us through that, John. Is there any, is there anything that anybody has any questions or comments about from the report? I, I am sure that along with the rest of the board, we are excited for that process of hiring that you were discussing and we are looking forward to the update on that for December. I hope that you get a lot of good candidates in there and that you really enjoy what you see. And I really appreciate you and your team working hard on all of the things that you're offering. I know that with school coming off for the next week, that the library and its regular programming are a hot item for many of those families. So it's nice to have a warm welcoming place for them to be.
And I welcome, you know, all you all to come into any of our programming. You're all welcome.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so it looks like we are on to setting the date and time of the regular library board meeting on December 18th at three. We discussed this in the last meeting, but are there any issues that have arisen on that one?
I'm going to be down in Arizona taking care of my grandma, but I talked to the librarian page and they, they have Wi-Fi services, so I am going to try my hardest to connect through Zoom for that meeting. But if something happens with my grandma and I can't make it, that's why I won't be here.
Is December 16th better for you? When do you leave?
I leave on December 12th and I don't get back until the 20th, so.
It sounds like, it sounds like if you can make it, that would be amazing, but it doesn't look like anybody else has any other problems with attendance. So we'll have a quorum. We can hold it. And thanks so much, Sari. It's important to be able to support your family like that. All right, and so on to new business. We have the one sheet here for Magdalena's report or presentation on her trip to the Association for Rural and Small Libraries Conference.
I need one.
I'll pass you mine for now and then John can hand me one. John, let me know that she is needed on staff today, but she's provided us with a great deal of information here. Is there any highlight from this that you'd like us to particularly spend some attention on, John?
Yes. Yeah, just want to let you know that this Association for Rural and Small Libraries Conference was covered. The registration fee and travel expenses were paid with LSTA grant funding, so that's very good for the budget. We always explore those type of professional development opportunities at no cost to the library. And then, you know, just, it's a great design by Magdalena in terms of breaking, you know, the agenda, like the conference minutes, but I want to highlight at the bottom that some of the things that she took away was creative ways to utilize volunteers in terms of, you know, just daily tasks that can be time consuming, such as the DVD collection maintenance and just learning to utilize volunteers to learn how to, you know, check for issues and how to, you know, system to make sure that, you know, customers are, you know, frustrated with like materials that aren't working and that saved a lot of time. So and also, again, we can't do anything without our volunteers, so thank you for them. And then, you know, she just came up with a list of, you know, program ideas. You know, it's, so I'll verbalize what they were, such as senior social hours. Some ideas are Sudoku, musical bingo, crossword puzzles, and you know, just also there's some talk of, you know, digital literacy for, you know, regarding AI and seniors, how they can use it or certain scams that people should be aware about. But those are some programming ideas that she got from the conference.
This looks like a really useful conference for her. And I think that often we, we miss the impact of these conferences on our working staff. This gives them chances to meet with other people in their field. It gives them opportunities to be inspired and excited about their profession. I love that she got to see Michael Threets because, I mean, he's the new Reading Rainbow and the PBS librarian and a really inspirational speaker on the power of libraries in the United States. I do like what I'm seeing here that she's applied for a competitive grant after having gone. It looks like she's putting her inspiration into some really practical purposes for us. So working with the volunteers, working with the patrons and working with the programming all seems like fantastic stuff.
I agree.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this one? Thank you so much for the information and thank Magdalena for us. I know she works hard over there.
Yeah, she did a great job with this.
All right, so item B, we have consideration and possible action regarding the approval of the monthly budget reports for October 2025. Does anybody have any discussion items or questions on that budget report? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve those reports or that report.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly budget reports from October 20th, 2025.
Thank you so much, Sue.
I knew I was going to get it out.
Yeah, you got it. Anybody want to give us a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ryan. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. Item C is similar, consideration and possible action regarding the approval of the library gift fund report for October 2025. Do we have any discussion items or questions that we would like?
I have a question and I don't know if anyone can answer it, but what is the gift fund for? Because as I was looking at it, I was thinking of when Penny was so concerned about the windows, you know, are we allowed to use some of that gift fund to help with those kind of items or no?
That is an excellent question, Sue. And the gift fund is historic. It's been set up for us through donor funding and has been there for quite some time. A lot of it gets, we can call upon it for things that we need for the library, but I think that capital improvement, like the windows, may not be in the scope of that. Patricia?
I would have to look into that, but that's my understanding, but I was looking for that. Hello, Priscilla Baker. We can look into that, but it's my understanding that that would have to have to go to out of a different fund, but we can confirm that.
I really appreciate you looking into it Patricia and helping clarify our understanding of it. At the time that Penny was talking about that, I think she did a soft inquiry into that. And that was the impression that I had gotten from the result of her just asking about that and trying to understand it. But for our own benefit, we probably should understand whether or not the scope of the gift fund could be used for something like building improvements, refreshments of things like maybe a chair, you know, those sorts of things. Do, do those fall within the scope of the gift fund? Because in the past, I think most of what we've used it for has been programming and consumables for the library itself, for the mission itself, rather than those sorts of things.
I, this is Maddie, and I definitely appreciate it being looked into, but my impression was that it was for collections only.
All right, so.
I would appreciate confirmation.
Perfect. So this sounds like a timely moment to just check our understanding and see if there's anything in that scope that we need more understanding for. Thank you for that. But on the budget report itself, do we have any questions about that report? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion for approval on that report.
I'll make motion to approve the library gift fund report for October 2025.
Thank you, Sari. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ryan. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. All right, for the last item on new business, it's consideration and possible action regarding the discussion regarding the library becoming Children's Internet Protection Act compliant. John, do you want to take us through that a little bit?
Yes, you know, just right now, I'm just trying to understand the landscape of our library and just with, as a team, have their input. And so just discussing this among my library team, they just need more time to, you know, research more about, you know, just the impact of SIPA and see how it is tied to certain grant funding, not all of them of course, but they just want to see how it would impact the type of filters they would apply, the policy, and they want to, you know, just explore the conditions of it all and share that information to the board so that we understand its entire impact and even involve the community so they are aware of what this is. So right now, SIPA is a filter against, you know, you know, obscene visual materials, you know, to protect children and which we support. We already have library policy that protects children, but we just want to make sure that, you know, it's something that we're, like, it doesn't impact, you know, other areas of service, such as like, you know, computer policy and how we provide that or certain programming that we do. But staff, yes, whatever way the board votes on, you know, we are adaptable and we will support, but we just need more time to like research this.
I appreciate that, John. In my conversation with you, some of the things that rose for me, and I'm sure that all of you have had your conversations with John on this too, and you can correct me. One of the things that you had said to me that I thought had an impact was that there are a variety of grants that we hold now as the library, as Churchill County Library, and there are a variety of grants that we are about to pursue. SIPA as a grant may have some repercussions for the grants that we already hold. It also may have some repercussions for the grants that are forthcoming that we may be trying to pursue. So spending a little bit of time getting to know our grants ecosystem might be of strong benefit to us before we run into something that we don't understand. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. And there are other grant avenues that don't have this requirement that we can explore. I have some, you know, just, you know, just, you know, from the museum department, they have some grant tools that I like to explore that, yeah, doesn't have certain requirements that we're not fully aware of.
Right. And because, as Tom was telling us last month, the specific grant that he's looking at has a deadline of January, a little bit more time might be appropriate for the staff. If you feel like this is going to be a good match for us or a good fit for us, you'll bring that back to us in December. bring that back to us in December.
Yes. So, you know, may delay things, but it wouldn't prevent us from, you know, pursuing the grant in 2026. But, you know, there is, it's, it's okay to have conversation on this before, you know, deciding on anything.
I appreciate that. I think the other thing about this that I find very meaningful, and, and people can jump in here too, is that we already do have a policy that is surrounding some of these things, like watching Purient material on the, on the public computers. I mean, there is something that our policy already has in place. If in the future we decide to do filters of any form, that is something that we can do with or without this grant. We have the ability to do those things. However, because our mission deals with access and because some of the things that we are, are working with here might start to impact policy, this might be something that we want to be very intentional about as we move forward. And so I would rather some of that intentionality be led by our director and by our staff and they be feeling fully ready to house that broader conversation. So when John said, maybe we need a little more time with this, I think that's what the nature of this item is, is trying to ask us for.
Yeah. Just need, need more time just to understand its impact and have staff, like, you know, just understanding this landscape of, you know, SIPA. But we are actively, you know, prioritizing, prioritizing building relationships with our parents and our children and making them aware of, you know, safety and trying to engage them on what kind of programming and spending our priorities and energies towards those type of activities that really help them and protect them. But, yeah, that's something that we can do within our existing library policy.
Okay. Does anybody want to prize anything from their own conversations or their concerns?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm very grateful for you looking further into SIPA, right? I'm saying that right? I think it, I'm excited for you to present it to us so we can see the costs and benefits and see the advantages and disadvantages so we aren't just hanging by a thread and making a decision where we don't know the fine print that there might be. And so thank you for that.
I appreciate that. Are there any other questions or points of discussion on this topic? I think that the discussion has been well held. We will wait for you to bring us back material in December if you feel like this is something that we do, would be a good fit for us and you would want to pursue. I think that these kinds of conversations are excellent for us to be involved in, although when you search for grants and when you decide what grants you're going to be pursuing, that's something that you and your team probably lead and we support more than we dictate which grants you can and cannot pursue. So I think that's the other thing that, as, as this one came through and we had those conversations, I, I thought it was worth mentioning, that we're here as a supportive member of your team on those grants. So, good job. I think that this has been enlightening for all of us and then we can continue our research That brings us to our final public comment. Is there any public comment that anybody would like to bring? Hearing none. We can adjourn. Thank you so much, everybody.